All right, so approval of minutes from, I didn't get minutes from the last meeting.
And we didn't have the minutes when you took the minutes from last meeting. So last minute, last meeting, we didn't approve your minutes because nobody had them.
You don't have them?
No.
Right.
And Dan didn't either.
I know there's, the last three meetings are not on.
November 22nd, I know you sent it, but I couldn't.
Yeah, I just haven't, yeah.
You can resend that.
November 22nd, we gotta get you. I still have to write the ones from two weeks ago.
Okay.
And then we'll approve it.
I'll double check that.
So we have to approve both this meeting and two meetings ago. On the meeting.
Karen, Communications?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good. You got enough on your agenda here?
No public speak. Start with the dump truck.
Yep. We have a 2003 dump truck. This is, this is a picture of the cab. And if you look at it, the cab is in really decent shape. And, but it's got a dump body on it, and the dump body not in the real good shape. Here's a picture of the dump body. If you look on the, if you look on the inside of it, you can see all the patches that were put in there already.
Are you packing with science again?
No, we have to use a little heavier duty stuff.
We had to actually use our stuff.
You think of the stuff as, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, it just eats it away.
It just eats it away.
I love that.
So, so.
This looks like a, what is this, Joe, that big?
That's, that's a hunk of metal that we welded in on the floor. So that we can continue to use it. Now, if you look in the middle of it, you see the black piece in the middle? That's actually a hole in the, that's actually a hole.
The bandana?
We didn't patch that yet. You're right, the bandana.
Okay.
So, so this 2003, the, the cabin chassis is in very good shape, but the body isn't. So, if we put $23,000 into this truck to put a new body on it, instead of buying a brand-new truck cabin chassis and body for $125,000, this truck will go another eight years or so. So, in my opinion, it's kind of a no-brainer. This is something that is, we're hoping to get it done this year.
Don't sway us with the "it's a no-brainer." We cannot be swayed. We'll let you know if it's a no-brainer.
Gotcha. So, we're, we're hoping that, we're hoping that we can get this done this, the rest of this winter, so that in the springtime, this truck is good to go.
So if this gets approved ultimately, how long before you could get this operation ordered and get it?
They're in stock, we've talked to several different vendors, they're in stock. So it's just a matter of us taking it down there, and within two weeks, we'll get it back.
Okay.
What would happen is, we take the old body off, and we trash it, and probably get $150 bucks for the metal on it. They, they, they take it, they sandblast the frame, paint it, put a whole new subframe on it with a piston. Now, if you look at this one here, the piston is actually leaking oil, which isn't a good thing.
Hasn't been.
Yeah. If, if you look here, you can see where it's actually, when you raise the body, it's actually dripping down the side.
This is the bottom of this one?
That's the bottom of that one.
So that, that'll be new, this whole mechanical. Lovely.
Yes.
This whole frame is replaced.
Everything will be brand-new. Everything will be brand-new. And the frame will be all sandblasted and painted.
And the good news is, it would be between 110 or 125 to do the whole ball of wax. But our conservative PPW director.
And we enjoy that he's conservative.
Have they made any changes to the, to the dump body that would hopefully make it last longer, or is it basically the same?
Well, this one lasted 13 years. So, 13 years, you get 13 years out of a dump body, hauling the type of material that they haul, cleaning catch basins is very abrasive, it's very corrosive. That's, that's really good. That's really good. So.
And what goes in here, Joe, like all the salt, sand, like the really eat-away stuff, right?
It's stuff that we take out of the catch basin, which is very corrosive, very, very abrasive.
That's enough details on that. For you. Okay. All right.
And both of these are coming from the Enterprise retained earnings?
Correct. Yes.
And it sounds good to me, I love putting in here that a new truck would cost $125, the only.
So you're technically saving $102.
Have they qualified for a no-brainer yet?
I, I was, I would have a hard time coming in here and asking you for $125, because that's just a lot of money.
How old is this cab? Is it also, was the whole same 2003?
2003.
It's in great shape.
It is in good shape.
It looks, oh.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I do not.
Pardon? Make a motion that we, for the amount requested, $23,000 from Enterprise retained earnings to Capital Sewer for the new dump truck body.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye. Do we need a public hearing on this?
Yep.
Please.
Which hasn't been set, still have to be set on the first and be held on the 15th.
Right. Thank you.
If you're gonna do that, let me know. I'm not gonna be at the first, so that's one reason why I'm here. See what your schedule is.
Doing it now.
We're gonna do that.
So you're gonna do it. I'll have the ad ready and then.
Thanks Barb.
This is what we're gonna do.
I figured, but I'll make sure.
So public hearing will be the 15th? Is that what you're saying, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, because Dan did ask, because if there was a, like, if we wanted to fly these through.
Right.
And Joe said he'd save that card.
Yeah.
He took a rain check. On the Speedway.
Right.
So we'll know if it comes speeding from you, you really mean it.
Yeah.
All right, and then $150,000 for the Ferry Street water main crossing?
Yeah.
I have more pictures here.
Oh.
The pictures are great, Joe.
This actually shows the water main underneath, and when I pass these out, I'll explain it a little bit closer. If, if you look at, if you look at, there's two pipes under there, bigger one and a smaller one. The small one on the other side is actually a gas main.
These, Joe?
These.
It looks very big.
That's what, the, the one in the front is a 12-inch cast-ironed water main that was probably put in around 1910 or something.
This thing, right?
That, that one right there.
Okay.
Now, if you look, it doesn't go straight across. There's a little bow thirds of the way from the left-hand side. And that's, that's the problem that we're, that we're having. And if you look, there's, you don't have hangers that are holding that pipe in nice increments along it. Those hangers have rotted away. So that pipe is hanging there by one or two hangers. So, if we don't do something with that, one of these days, we're gonna get a call that there's water blowing out. It's going down into Lower Mill Pond. So, as you know, we, we received approval, and we've got it all designed. We've got $60,000 that we had appropriated from retained earnings, earnings six months ago. So it's all designed. And the new pipe that we're gonna put in isn't gonna go underneath the bridge. Because it goes underneath the bridge, and you hang it from the bridge, you have to have Mas Dot involved, because it's adding weight to the bridge, and they have to justify how you're hanging it, and the size of the hangers, and the size of the weight and all that. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna come off the bridge on the north side, on the old mill side, and come up over the top, and then back down.
Like along the edge?
Along the edge.
Is there any way to show me on this picture?
Uh, I, no, because if you, because, well, the bridge is, here's the top of the bridge here. And this would come along the outs, the other side, the, this pipe would actually come up exposed, and then come back down and hook in over here. So it would actually be above ground. It would be above ground on the other side of the railing on the north side.
Aesthetically, what's it gonna look like?
Aesthetically, what's it gonna look like, is gonna look like a big, black pipe, similar to what you have on the Park Street Bridge now. That's right.
One by the skating rink.
One by the skating rink, Joe?
One by the skating rink.
Okay.
That, that's my point. It's not something that is very, very noticeable, because it's just a pipe hanging on the side.
Okay.
Do we have a lot of those?
We, no, we don't. Two of them, this will be, this will be the second one. Most of the other bridges, they were done years ago, and they're, they're hung underneath. But the, the less expensive way to go is to bring them out of the ground, out, and get them off the bridge altogether. So if you ever have to do anything to the bridge, you're not dealing with the water main.
And this is the manhole right under it, Joe, that, right, this, this stuff here, what is this?
That's the water that comes from Lower Mill Pond, over the dam into that one Ferry Street.
Okay.
Is this common to other, other communities, like, I mean, do others, is this something, a way that it's done these days?
Oh, this is, this is standard. This is standard.
The new way.
The new way. You'll, you'll see, you go through West Springfield, they have piles of them, they have tons of them, railroad bridges and everything. They, they were hanging them under railroad bridges anymore, because the rail won't let them do it. So they come up over the side.
It doesn't affect functionality of the.
It doesn't affect the functionality, and they put the pipe inside of a steel sleeve, so that some kids can't break into it, because it's inside of a steel sleeve.
Oh, that's good. What's this other one, Joe? What's this guy?
That's a gas main.
It, is, he's, he's gonna stay down there?
He's gonna stay there. Let the gas company worry about that.
The integrity of that is good? What is this? Is that what you were just saying, is the gas?
There is another gas, newer gas main up on top.
Oh, yeah, the big black one.
The black one. Yeah.
Is something going through this little one?
Yeah, that's a gas main also. A lot, a lot of roads we have, we have more than one water main on it, we have more than one sewer main on it.
Is that for redundancy and rerouting, or just volume?
It could be, it could be volume. It could be the fact that the first one that was put in was too small, when something else went down the line. So the gas company came in and put a bigger one in, but they left that one there. They, they evolved it.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you that, Joe, they still, it's still in use.
Now, this metalwork on the bottom here is just the framework, like a catwalk, where you can walk out there and, and take pictures, right?
Wait, so what would you stand on? Are you under, you're under now.
You're under. Down here, there's a, there's actually a walkway that, that you have to kinda like walk.
I thought maybe you were, had to straddle this in order.
Well, you have to kinda like duck underneath all the, all the bracing and everything, but there's a walkway there.
Seems unsane.
But it, but it's not something that, it's not something you can get on and just walk through. You'd have to, you'd have to, like I said, duck underneath and work, work your way through.
Seems like a real good reason to put them above, above board now. Because I don't, I'm looking at this, I have no idea how they would go onto there and replace that.
Well, if we had to put it under there, the cost of this would be substantially more also.
Because of access?
Not, not only because of access, they would actually have to take the top of the deck off of the bridge.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Say no with that, Joe, is a no-brainer.
And, and now you're dealing with, like I said, with Mas Dot. Because you're messing with one of their bridges, so.
A year later.
You've gotta do it exactly the way they wanna do it, or you're not gonna do it.
Yep.
But they're happy with the new process.
They are. We had Mas Dot come out there, they, we explained to them what they wanted to do, and they said, "Yeah, you're good." We showed them the finished product, they said, "We're good."
And you guys are good with the $150,000?
Yes, that's what our engineers estimate this job is gonna cost. Retained earnings.
They wanted to reuse the pipe on this one, but it's.
Sometimes you just have to let go.
When, when would you do it?
We're hoping.
Take the $150,000.
We're hoping to put this out in the spring.
Just.
Yeah, because it's all designed, so it's just a matter of, it's just a matter of our engineers putting it out the bit, and hoping that this will be one of the first jobs in the spring.
Does this one get taken down, Joe, this beauty that's under there?
That beauty is gonna come out of there.
Okay.
No telling how long it would hang on there.
We don't.
Sooner than later.
That's right. Yeah, that pipe would come out of there. We don't need it falling in and then having to fish it out.
I'll write it down, whoever.
I move that we appropriate $150,000 from Enterprise retained earnings to the Capital Water Ferry Street Water Main, for, yeah, Capital Water Ferry Street Water Main Crossing, to provide funds for the replacement of the Water Main Crossing at the aforementioned Ferry Street Bridge.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
All of those things, aye.
Now, if the board will just indulge me for another minute here, I gotta, I have more pictures. A new snow blower came in today.
Oh! He's all happy.
So if you look at it.
Whoa!
Can't use it now, it's too pretty.
It's too pretty.
I'm not, I'm not standing in front of it in the picture, just to let you know, this is.
The, the, the black tube that's laying down, that actually stands up. That's the chute to, to load the trucks. But it came in today, we just unloaded it from the truck.
You guys praying for snow?
We need a snowstorm now.
This, this one stands up right there, so.
Yeah, I don't know about that one.
Yeah.
February?
Are you excited? Have you fired it up?
We did not yet. We are, we are, we just put, it just came in 11 o'clock today. We put it in there, and we've got it.
That's awesome.
The neat thing with this.
This is the blower?
That's the blower part. The neat thing with this, the controls go in the cab with the operator, and they're wireless. So you don't have cables, we have, the old one, we had to run cables, had a cut hole in the cab to run the cable through, and it was always something that, oh, it got, the box got wet, and it doesn't work. This is wireless.
Wow.
Are you moving from truck to truck?
Now, where's the cab?
No, there is no cab.
That's gonna attach?
This goes on.
That.
New loader.
Right.
The loader comes in from behind this thing.
The beauty.
Hooks onto it, and pushes this thing down the road, and loads the trucks.
That's crazy.
That was that loader. We saw the other, that he did the, what was it, articulating?
Articulate, yeah, I said.
Yeah, he brought it over in the parking lot, so we could view it from the window and.
So I'm curious, how long from approval to it arriving today? When was it approved?
Well, this one wasn't bad.
It wasn't bad. This was, this was maybe three or four, four months. I think, I think Dan, I remember Dan saying, "We need to push," I thought it was November.
Oh, that's not bad.
I don't even think, yeah, that, I don't even think it was like four months. This one was good.
Was good.
Wow. That's great.
So, that's all I have, folks.
Well, thank you for the lovely photos.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
If you have any other no-brainers.
Not today.
Because that's what we enjoy. Okay, I think no.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for, for everything.
Then we have the City Council Budget Consultant.
I move that we accept, oh.
So I just threw some numbers on there. I mean, you can move, you can adjust, except for the top, this kinda step. That includes the raise. But the bottom, if you wanna adjust things, we do have our swearing-in ceremony. Of course, we have no idea how many councilors will be new, and how many will be leaving, so, you know, we need to have some money for. A theme, things, and plaques.
Right. And, and you do know that the little food supplies, we split three ways. I mean, we can't get any more economical on this if we try.
They have us just bake muffins if we get elected.
So $100 is probably generous there, but it gets, if it doesn't get used there, it goes other places.
So, I'm curious. What, what is this counselor traveler? And we actually spent $100 this year, please.
You can explain counsel travel.
It's one, one counselor. One of your counselors feels the necessity to attend a meeting in Boston, and that is what you have in your budget, so he uses it on.
Well, here's the thing. To me. That, whatever goes in there should be available to all councilors.
It is.
Right. Because I, I attended something, I didn't ask for reimbursement.
There you go.
In Worcester or something. So beat 'em to it. I should've, because it was summer.
Well, first of all, first of all, one, one thing. First of all, there is a, one thing that is really important to us, and it's important to you, and I do know as a finance subcommittee, it's important to us that the procedures are followed, where if you were going anywhere, and attending anything, and expecting reimbursement, the approval comes first. So a purchase order is open, Barb was more than happy to open purchase orders for any of the councilors, and then it comes to me for approval. So it needs to be approved before it's spent. And that is the way our whole entire city works. So that people don't buy things, and then ask for approval, and then ask for reimbursement, or the invoices come in to pay for items when they haven't been approved. So, I have not seen any purchase order, or travel form, or anything that substantiates that $100. But in the past, I don't know how many years, Barb, two or three? We, and, and it's, it's vital to us for many reasons. Number one, that we are, you know, we, we are the elected officials, and this should, our policy should be followed. We should be setting the examples of them. And I follow them. And what happens, too, is if we get invoices that aren't paid, like, we are extremely proud of, we get invoices in and we pay them, because we've opened purchase orders, so they're in, they're out, they're done. You know, streamlining them. I don't want to have, you know, any type of reputation as a city of, "Yeah, well, you know, they don't ever pay, and it takes months to get you money." That is not true. Our, our process is perfected. You have an open purchase order, an invoice comes in, it's processed the following week, you know, it's, it's like, it's one thing that's really important to me.
Because you've already accounted for the money.
You know, municipalities can sometimes have a very, you know, bad reputation, "I'm not paying," you know, "It takes months." That does not happen here, and I don't want it to ever happen here.
It happens if people don't follow the process.
But if you are, if you need to pay an invoice that no one has even heard about yet, and hasn't, a purchase order hasn't even been opened, never mind approved, it's gonna take a little while to get that invoice paid. The longer it takes to follow the process is the longer it takes. So, I can tell you that I know of no expenditure of that, and also, that process, if not followed, say, you want to go to something in two weeks, or, you know, like in, like something coming up, you follow the process, open the purchase order, that money's gone. You know, so, when it's followed properly, and like, that shows that, you know, somebody comes to Barbara and says, "I need to open a purchase order." She says, "No, I'm sorry, there isn't anything left in that line item." You know, this, we're very careful with our funds.
My view on this, whenever, and you guys can tell me if I'm, if you've got a line item for travel for a group of people, it should be.
Because it is, it's nine of you.
It should be expensed, or whatever, doled out, one ninth at a time. Because you can't just have one person take all of it. We all have a, or you have to nine times 100, and put 900 in there.
Right, exactly.
It's either zero or 900, or we all get $10, in which case, you know.
Or all have, or all have the option to access that one amount.
And that's ridiculous. It's $10. And that's what it breaks down to be. So in my mind, I don't see a reason for it. It's just not enough, it's not enough money.
So I looked up, I, I think that we took it out last year, and.
Ended up going back in?
Said counselor made a stank, and it went back in. So that's up to you, I don't.
And we do, like.
Whatever you wanna do.
We do, exactly, it's, you know, you're, you know, you're subcommittee, and, but I can tell you that, you know, we do, you know, pay different travels, and you'll see the line items, but I can also tell you that there are a lot of us that pay our own, whether they're certifications, you know. In, in Barbara's position alone, you know, she has a lot of, like, that is one budget that we have actually attacked pretty severely in the past years. Because, because when you gotta cut, you gotta cut somewhere. So there are, there are travels that, you know, Barbara has, with being the city clerk, different associations. Some of them she pays for herself. You know, because she knows that, that, you know, that.
Just doesn't exist.
Right. It's not an open book.
Right.
And same thing with you, and same thing with me. You know, and, but it's really, it's, I, I think what you're looking at is, really, there's nine of us, and there's $100. So, you know, am I gonna, you know, pop it up to 900?
No.
So that everybody can, you know.
That doesn't make, to me, I know. I don't, my personal feeling is to get rid of this line item. It's just, I don't want it to go up to 900, and it's pointless at 100. For one, you know. Or we all get $10.
Everybody has to be okay with that, because then if somebody comes in.
Well, this is the finance committee.
Because, you know, you may look at legal ads and go, "Wow, $2,000, that's plenty of money." The legal ads, I mean, it varies, depending on what, like that.
But you'll spend.
The one for this next week, for the $450,000, Barb, we had to put the whole thing in. It was $140, $150 for one.
It's, all the ads are, the ads kill us, but.
And they go up every year.
Right.
They're just outrating.
And they're required, we have no way around it, you know, especially, these are, there's, like, we were just talking, you know, these, these public hearings are ads.
It's interesting that they.
Some years, some years they're okay, but some years, I'm like moving stuff around to make sure.
Oh, we're, I mean.
But aren't we beyond that?
You would think, but no.
I didn't hear that question.
Like, that they're still requiring it to be in a newspaper? Seems like you would get more hits from social media.
Nope, so, please don't give them that suggestion. And, and, and we post it in three other places that are online. So we post it on two state websites. And the legal ads now need to be published on a online thing.
Well, I just, just today, we got this notification as of January 21st, the newspapers all have to post legal ads onto this state, New England Newspaper Association website. So, we got the website, and it actually is really good. Our hearing for next week is already, you go in there, you do a search, Reeshampton, and there's everything. Our public hearing for next week is listed on there.
Okay.
And we actually just put a better link on our website, because it lists every, you can put, it's got the Keno thing for Whiskers, it's got everything with East Hampton. You just put East Hampton, and they all come up.
Nice.
But it's an, it's advertising.
But that's part of the, part of the reason that our ad costs are going up, is that the newspapers are required to do all legal ads.
Other stuff.
They went up, they went up when they didn't have to do other stuff.
And they go up, they go up every year.
Yeah. So, it's a requirement that we can't get rid of.
Oh, well, you know, if I wanna travel, there's nothing in that line item, but look, we got $2,000, that's plenty of money. Well, it's, it's not.
I would never take from anybody.
But whatever you wanna do.
That's just me, I don't, Dan, you may have a completely.
No, that was the only one I had a question about, because it looks like the.
You wanna wait, I mean, this, doesn't have to be a Karen until 16, so if you wanna, until Dan is here, and talk, I mean, I don't need it like.
But in all the time, I can say there's only one person that has used it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And has.
But what I've noticed is it hasn't been used this year.
It hasn't been used yet?
Because the thing is this week.
Our records, last week. The, the meeting that's usually attended was last week, and I can tell you that I didn't go, neither did our finance director, because there wasn't.
What is this meeting?
It's the Mas Municipal Association.
And it's expensive to go, it's way more than that. That might cover your parking.
Well, actually, it's not way more than that, to, for the.
Registration.
Yeah, for the registration. But the problem is, it's only, it, it doesn't cover the whole thing, but it's like, one out of nine.
Well, that's the thing, what if two of us went?
I was just gonna say, you know, then you'd split it, so, you, and it, and the 100 does not pay for the whole thing. But, you know, why is one person?
Yeah, that's just crazy.
But.
I, I don't think things like that. Because I just.
It made me happy.
I immediately divided by nine, because that's how I think. And I'm like, really, $10? I can live without that, $10.
You wanna.
Or multiply it by nine.
Throw it up into, you know.
You don't have to throw it anywhere, they, like.
Take it out?
Throw it away. Right, like, if she's interested in taking it out, then, you know, that's, they're prerogative. And as you said, Dan, as a, it's, it's on there, but for the use that it's been, I have no record, no record or no request. Of it being used this year.[1686.58]
And we are getting raised.
And the meeting was last week.
And we are getting raised in here, so. Well, and I say we, maybe I'm not really. Whoever is sitting here this year will have raised.
Right, the increase that was voted.
So that's something. I don't think we need a hundred.
Exactly, because it would start in January, you know.
Anyway, that's my. Do you wanna hold it one more?
Yeah, let's.
Till Dan gets back and.
What was the increase, by the way?
Thousand.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Three to four.
Right. That's what I thought it was.